We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the record for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of our government, justice for all.
If I could ask Counselor Cook if she'd like to read our mission statement?
The mission statement of the town of Silver City. Can everybody hear me? Visit on now. My new microphone. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and educational resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area and high quality of life.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a proclamation for Professional Social Work Month of March 2012. You want to meet me at the podium?
This is a proclamation whereas the social work profession has been instrumental in achieving civil rights and human rights advances in the United States and across the globe for more than a century. And whereas, the primary mission of social work is to enhance human well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable. And programs and services provided by professional social workers are essential elements of the American social safety net. And whereas, social workers make a critical impact in adolescent and youth development, aging and family caregiving, child protection and family services, healthcare navigation, mental and behavioral health treatment, military and veterans assistance, nonprofit management, and community development, and poverty reduction. And whereas, social workers function as specialists, consultants, private practitioners, educators, community leaders, policymakers, and researchers, and social workers influence many different organizations and human service systems and are employed in workplaces ranging from private and public agencies, hospices and hospitals, schools and clinics, to businesses and corporations, military units, elected offices, think tanks, and foundations. And whereas, social workers seek to improve social functioning and social conditions for people in emotional, psychological, economic, and/or physical need. And social workers are experts in care coordination, case management, therapeutic treatment for bio-psychosocial issues, a big word, and have roles in more than 50 different fields of practice. And whereas, social workers believe that a nation's strength depends on the ability of the majority of its citizens to lead productive and healthy lives. And social workers help people who are often navigating major life challenges find hope and new options for achieving their maximum potential. And whereas, social workers identify and address gaps in social systems that impede full participation by individuals or groups in society. Now therefore, in recognition that our nation would be less successful without the contributions of America's 640,000 social workers, my James R. Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, proclaim the month of March 2012 as Professional Social Work Month and call upon all citizens to join with the National Association of Social Workers and Western New Mexico University School of Social Work in celebration and support of the social work profession. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Patty West and I am the Western Program Unit Chair for the National Association of Social Workers, New Mexico Chapter.
I'm Leslie Cook. I'm an assistant professor at the School of Social Work at Western New Mexico University. We are just really trying to promote our professions and then think of the word out. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Nobody signed up under public inputs. We'll go to council comments. Counselor Bederson, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that a week ago, just coming tomorrow, I attended the District Seven Conference. It's the New Mexico Municipal League has kind of put New Mexico's different municipalities into districts. And so, we're in District Seven, which is sort of the southwest part of state. And it was a good meeting. We got updates on what's going on at the, up in Santa Fe. And it was very well attended. It was one of the larger league district meetings. And apparently, they've been well attended across the state. So it shows that people are being very active and watching what's going on up at, up in Santa Fe at the legislature. It's becoming critical to make sure that we monitor what the state legislature is planning to do with our gross receipts and particularly with our food and medical deductions. And the next day, I attended the newly elected officials because I'm elected in an odd year, just like District Three is. I have to go the year after I'm elected because they're only held in even years because that's the cycle other municipalities are on. And that was a very good presentation with a lot of updated information as well. So I just want to let folks know that keeping up to date with what's going on at the municipal league level and with new legislation and new information about just being effective councilors. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
Oh, I went to a meeting. I went to a meeting on Saturday with Ann and Jose and Cynthia. It was very interesting. A lot of people there. Interesting what they're doing in their municipalities. And now, when I read the newspaper, you know, I can kind of put everything together even a little bit more of what's happening in TRC and Los Cruces and Anthony. And I'm still new at this, so I don't have a lot of comment, but that meeting was very informative. I don't know what I retained yet. I think it'll come out as I get put on the spot.
Do you want anything about someone?
Yes, I think there's medicine.
Thanks, Counselor Ray.
Rudy Dean. I have a few comments here. I got in contact with Mr. Nick Seibel as to explore a possibility of a roof canopy in the building between Yankee and Bullard since there has been a lot of activity down there during the summertime. So we will explore that. Also, be aware that hot weather is coming up and be on the lookout for the bicyclists and the motorcyclists and the kids. Also, one more thing. I'd like to see more people, if possible, fly the U.S. flag here in silver. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Morris?
Mr. Ray, thank you. Actually, I wasn't going to have any comments, but Counselor Ray just reminded me that we do have the bicycle race coming up. We're going to have a tremendous amount of bicyclists out. And I encourage everybody, drivers and bicyclists both, to be very defensive and be aware of each other's presence. We want to keep accidents between vehicles and bikes down to, you know, to zero if possible. So those with driving cars, keep an eye out for those bicyclists. And for the bicyclists, you know, be aware that we are a small town with a lot of commerce, a lot of activity. We serve, you know, three counties commercially, so we have more traffic here than we actually have citizens during the day. So be aware of the high traffic for the low, for streets that aren't really engineered for that type of traffic. Just everybody be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bederson.
I just also want to remind everyone, it's been in the paper as well, and I think we're all well aware that it's dry outside. And really, let's try to watch what we do with cigarettes and with other items. Let's be a little more fire conscious and just be aware that the fire hazard is, it's high. It's very high. And during this time of the year and I'm sure through the summer, we're going to have to really pay special attention. We really would like to ensure that we don't have another season here in Grant County like we did last year, although things are pretty, pretty dry and ready to burn out there already with what's going on. So please, please take care and just be fire wise. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm so excited to get onto the agenda. Let's do it. Next item on the agenda, does anybody have any changes?
No, sir.
Hearing none. Next item, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council, March 13th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I note that we approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 13th, 2012.
Mr. Mayor? I'll second it. There's a motion to second to approve. Is there any discussion? There's a motion to second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council for March 13th, 2012. All those in favor, signal five to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is under reports. Do you want to go straight into the printed reports or? First, we will have a presentation of tax increment financing by Mark Balenzuela, George K. Baum and Company. Mark, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. It's great to be here in Silver City with you this evening. As, as many of you know, I serve as the financial advisor to the town of Silver City. The presentation I have in front of you today is, is a very high-level overview of tax increment, development districts, and financing. And we can certainly delve into the details and the more of the complexity with any questions you may have. But I, just, just to kind of give you a preface, kept it very high level. And it can certainly get much more complex than I'm showing you here today. Before I get into the presentation, I'd like to introduce Brad Angst. Brad is, is a partner out of the Albuquerque office, and he works very closely with, with me in, in putting together information for Silver City and for other clients here in New Mexico. Mayor and members of the council, let me direct you to Slide Two and talk a little bit about just generally what tax increment development districts are. They're, it's not a new tool. However, to New Mexico, it's, it's a relatively new tool. The legislature in 2006 passed a statute that allowed municipalities to use this new financing tool in New Mexico. And a few communities in New Mexico have gone forward with it. Primarily, the first was the city of Albuquerque, and they were really the, sort of the push to, to the legislature to get a statute in place like tax increment development districts. This tool, it's a financing tool. It's, it's a way for communities to, to create an opportunity for developers, whether it's the city themselves that wants to develop, or a private, private developer that wants to come in and put together either retail, commercial, or residential development in your community. And the thought behind it is that, in, in the most basic sense, you have raw land in your community where a developer wants to put houses and grocery stores and different things. That raw land is producing some amount of revenue to your, to your community, to your municipality. Whether it's property tax that is being paid on that, perhaps there's a, a small little convenience store on that property now, and that's providing grocery receipts tax. So there's a base level of revenue that this piece of property is producing for your community. The idea behind tax increment development districts is that, that a municipality would come in, draw a line around that, that piece of property that we're talking about. It could be, it could be a solitary building. It could be a neighborhood block. It could be your entire community. It's, it's really up to you as the governing body to decide how that development district would get put in place in your community. So in this case of raw land with one commercial establishment on it, you could draw a line around that property and work with a developer who would come in and say, "We're going to build 10 homes. We're going to have 10,000 square feet of commercial space." And after that is all built out, after those 10 homes are built and sold to, to residents of your community, after that commercial space is leased and is producing revenue for you, they're, they're selling retail products or something that would accrue grocery receipts tax, the revenue new, the incremental revenue to, to Town of Silver City goes from this base up to a higher level, some amount. Let's say that it doubles your revenue for that piece of property. That incremental revenue, according to this statute, can be used to sell bonds into the market. That can be, can be used to build the infrastructure in that boundary, in that, that new district that you created, in that map that you drew the line around, around this property. Those bonds would be sold for the purpose of building sidewalks, roads, putting in the utilities that are necessary for that retail and that residential development to prosper. So in other words, it's a way for a municipality to develop its community, tie the growth and, and use the revenue from that growth, from the projected growth, to pay for all the infrastructure needs for that, for that piece of property. It's a way to have the development pay for itself rather than having the rest of the community who's already built their roads and has their utilities in place, rather than taxing the rest of the community to pay for the development in this, in this new development area. So that's what the tool is. It allows the town of Silver City to create these development districts, and they essentially become political subdivisions of the state. They become these entities, these boards of finance, that have the ability to issue debt and collect, collect tax revenue. Now, it doesn't collect the tax revenue that you were benefiting from in the past. So at that base level, it only has the ability to collect the tax revenue that is new growth from the development. And with that tax revenue, it can only use those revenues to pay for the bonds that were used to build the public, public infrastructure. So again, it's another way of having that new development pay for itself with revenues that will be generated from development of the property. So in a nutshell, and I know that's not exactly the most simple statement, but it allows you, a new tool, to segregate some piece of your community that you would like to see developer, or some private developer would like to see develop, and issue debt for the development of the public infrastructure. And this debt would not go on the balance sheet of the town of Silver City. The debt would be sold through this new district, through this tax increment development district. So your bonding capacity as a community would not be impacted in any way. It would all go on to this development district. The interesting thing about this, this tool, you could do this already. You could be working with a developer who wants to develop the same piece of property that we've just, we've just been talking about. And the town of Silver City could issue debt to pay for that public infrastructure. You could tie your grocery receipts tax, like you have in the past, to pay back that debt. But it becomes your debt. It becomes the town of Silver City's debt. It's on your balance sheet. It's on, it's, it's tied to your credit rating. So that's an option for you if you choose to do that. This tool simply allows you to create that district to allow it to pay for its own debt and not put your bonding capacity to use for those, for that particular development. So with that, I've said a lot. Let me just stop and pause and ask you if you have any questions about, about that, and then I'll, I'll dig more into the details of, of how this really works in New Mexico.
Just clarifying, critical, I can't remember if she said it becomes a separate entity of the state?
It, it's a, that's a term of our mayor and counselor. It means that it's a government entity. It means that while it's not separate from the town of Silver City, it has the ability to sell tax-exempt bonds like you would as the town of Silver City.
Okay, but it still would be underneath the purview of the town. I mean, I guess when you said it was almost a separate entity, it maybe failed that as if there wouldn't be any relation to the town. Do you see what I mean?
Sure. No, I completely understand.
Almost as if it was separate, you know, in all aspects politically. So that's what I was asking.
And it is not a separate entity. It, it only has this status so that it's, it's a government entity. It's a, it's a government vehicle that will be able to sell tax-exempt financing and, and collect tax revenue on behalf of the bondholders.
But not necessarily govern itself independently from?
That's right. And, and as, as I go through the discussion of how this works, whoever the developers are, and it can be the municipality, it could be the town of Silver City that wants to develop a piece of property and drive that. There is an arrangement that whoever the developers are, they have to come to this, to this council and present to you a very detailed document called the Development Plan. And that will outline all of the public infrastructure projects that would need to be put in place for the development to prosper. So all the roads that will be built, sidewalks that will be built, the utilities that will, that will go in, it will be a very detailed plan about what this development will look like once it's built out, the cost of the development, and different things like that.
So that would, you mean, follow our land use code? Everything would be the same? It would, I mean, which is all, all that information is laid out in the land use code where everything has to be very specific and has to be brought to the, to the council for council, you know, concurrence and approvals, so.
That's absolutely right. That's absolutely right.
Just a financing tool separately? So I guess, I guess I was thrown when that word was thrown into the mix, so.
Sure. No, I completely understand.
Thank you.
In the finance business, we have to have a governmental entity that will hold the debt, who, where the debt can reside on a balance sheet, in an audit. And in this case, when, when we do it with these separate districts, it's not the debt of the town of Silver City. So it has to be recorded and shown on some other balance sheet. That would be the balance sheet of the district that's created. As, as, as you go through the process on this, if you choose to use a tool like this, there will be a long conversation about who the governing body is of the district. It typically is the property owner, some representation of the property owner or the developer, and then a marriage of some members of the council or perhaps members of your, of the staff of the, of the community. But there is a governing board that will drive everything that happens on, on the development district. That board has a relationship to this council and a responsibility to this council. So they don't have sort of autonomy to operate outside of your rules or operate without your, your awareness or knowledge of, of everything that's happening. So if I can move on to, sure.
Real quickly, so basically, I guess for me, because, I mean, this goes out, so to me, it's basically a financial government. It's a financial governmental entity. That's really what we're talking about. So the term financial, basically what it does is it mitigates the government part of that. So it just makes me understand it better, and I just want to make sure that the folks that are listening to this broadcast understand that as well.
Yes, ma'am, and that's exactly what it is. It's a special purpose vehicle for the purpose of financing infrastructure within this development.
Mark?
Sure. Counselor Morris?
Just for clarification, with your example, and I'm going to try to simplify it a little easier just to make sure it kind of clear for me. When you say this base tax, so, so property, we're, we're getting some sort of property tax from there. And let's just say it's $100.
Sure.
And then after the developer goes in and develops the property, the property tax just through appreciation of assessed value becomes $200. What we're saying is, we're willing to give them that, that new $100 to do what they want or need to do. We still keep our $100 that was that base level on the undeveloped property.
That's absolutely right. And, and as we go further in the presentation, I'll refine that a little bit, but that's exactly right. That incremental improvement from the development will accrue to the district to pay for public infrastructure bonds, only for that purpose. Once the bonds are paid off, that money will begin to flow back to the original district or the original municipality that created the district. In this case, it would be Town of Silver City.
Mark, when we came, the district being created on the existing developed piece of property within the town, say downtown.
Absolutely, Mayor.
So, so to, so say we create a, a tid that has the boundaries of the arts and cultural district that we've already created, then it does basically the same thing. So any future increase in property tax would go towards the payment of the bonds that we issue, that they issue for the upgrade of the arts and cultural district infrastructure?
That's correct. And, and let me just add a little bit, a little bit more information to that. Once the infrastructure's built, the road is built, the utilities are put in the ground, that infrastructure is conveyed to the municipality. So again, these are tax-exempt bonds being paid for tax, with, paid for with tax revenue. So the town of Silver City would own that, that infrastructure. They would own those improvements after they're built.
Sure. I'd like to add something as well. The, the revenues that are going to be used to, the incremental increase in revenues that's used to pay off the bonds is not going to be unlimited in the, in the term that goes to pay those bonds. There is a finite, finite amount of time before that revenue would be released back to the city so they, they can enjoy that incremental increase.
And if, if we can turn to Slide Three, and it gives a little bit more of a graphic representation of, of what's happening here. So the shaded area, the green area, is the amount of revenue that the town of Silver City currently earns up to, up to 2011. So this is the point where you start to see the line varying up. The, the line that's going upward is, it's theoretic, hypothetically, the, a new tid established for, for Town of Silver City. It makes the assumption that new revenue from development of a tid here in the community would increase revenue. So as you see the, if, if you see that line going above the shaded area, everything in between that, where those arrows are, that amount of revenue would go to the district so that they could build out the infrastructure. It would pay for bonds for all the infrastructure in that, in that development district. The, the core revenue that the community is making today from their activity stays the same. It's not impacted in any way. So when you put a tid in place, and this is an important point, the tax rate in, in Silver City is a certain percentage. The property tax rate in Silver City today is a certain mill levy. Those, those rates, grocery receipts tax rates that are in place today, and the property tax mill rate that's in place today, get applied in the same proportion to the new development. So it's not as though the development can come in and say, "We only want a 5% grocery receipts tax rate," when the town of Silver City has a 7.5% grocery receipts tax rate. All the rates that you pay are what the district pays. So everything stays the same.
If that rate changes, will theirs change as well?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it's not static then?
That's right. It's proportional to what you're paying. So the district doesn't have any benefit, negative or positive, over what the town of Silver City would have to pay.
What we're trying to do is set up a system that, right now, if we go out and we build a road or fix a road, we've, we've taken the immediate money available and we fix the road. If you enhance the value of an area, now you have enhanced not only what you can do immediately, but what you can do in the future, long after the bonds are done. So you're, you're building capacity within the town rather than just putting patch and potholes all over.
That's exactly right.
Good work.
So, and you know, one other thing is, if, and I, and I always So, and you know, one other thing is, if, and I always like to compare this to what you can do as a municipality today. You have a lot of powers to do that. It requires that you put your revenue and your balance sheet on the table to issue that debt. So it does come out of your capacity to build public infrastructure around the entire community. In this case, with tax increment development financing, you have a special sort of advantage in the market. Investors typically do not like to look at structures with municipalities in a traditional sense, where a municipality will say, "Believe us, we have growth in our community, and we expect revenue to grow 20% over the next five years, so allow us to bond or allow us to sell debt at that level." Investors do not like that conversation. Investors like to look back at your history, and they like to say, "Here's how much revenue you have earned in the past 10 years based on your tax rates. So we think that we'll allow you to borrow some amount of that revenue rather than looking forward on projections of development." In tax increment development districts, it's a little different. Investors are willing to look at projected growth because the entire purpose of this financing structure is that if you build it, there will be more revenue because there will be new economic activity. And so investors are willing to say, "Yes, we will buy those bonds because we understand the structure. We understand that the structure is built specifically to grow revenue rather than just sort of a statement from the community that we think that we'll have growth in our community." So you have that advantage in tax increment development district financing. The other issue here is the investors are taking the risk. So let's say that you define an area, you have a private developer that comes into your community and wants to develop 100 acres of property. And they go, you go through the TID process with them, you allow them to go forward that way and finance the project that way. If everything falls out, if the market falls apart, if those houses can't be sold or ever even built, frankly, the bond investors are the ones that put the money into the financing, and they took that risk on. And so if there's some problem there, they're the ones that ultimately will have to bear that risk and work the issue out with that developer and with that district. In other words, the Town of Silver City's credit is not put on the line, which is, again, another benefit to having this special purpose vehicle to create this financing structure and separate it away from your fundamental credit rating and your balance sheet and your financials. Let me move forward and talk more about sort of the details. Again, I'm talking about this structure in a very high level. It can, it can get very complex, as you can imagine, with all the information that is required. So on slide four, I'm showing you some of the documents that you would be asking for if a developer did show up here tomorrow and wanted to do a tax increment development district. And there are certainly developers out there that are looking at this kind of a structure. The first thing would be is a long-term plan called a TID development plan that would really identify the specific property, it would provide you a map of the boundaries, all the public infrastructure that needs to be built within this district to develop it, the cost of each of those improvements, and it would land use descriptions, what they intend to build, some sketches of different things. It would also include an economic analysis. And this is really key to that conversation we had earlier about the investors taking the risk. The investors aren't going to do that unless there's a very thorough economic analysis that ties to this development. It will talk about how many retail establishments, how many commercial establishments they intend to have in the property, a rule of thumb of what those private enterprises expect to sell on an annual basis, and what grocery receipts tax would generate from that. So as an example, Albuquerque has a very large tax increment development district in its community, and they had a very serious economic analysis to that project. They looked at every possible zone and group of development in there and came up with an economic analysis that talked about, here's the property tax that will be generated over time, and the grocery receipts tax that would be generated over time because of the activity in that community. So that is something that is incumbent upon the developer to provide you. It's not a document that you will have to put together, but that's the kind of information that will come to you if there is a developer that wants to pursue that. If you review that, if you receive it, you feel good about the project, then you will have a development agreement with that developer. And that really is the control that this council has over this development district. It will outline all the roles and responsibilities, the legal framework under which the development can operate, different, your land use requirements and different things like that. That's really the meat of how this operation will work and your control over it. It will establish the governing body with your participation in that development district. Now, Mr. Brown asked a question earlier, and I wanted to kind of refine down to that question because we've been talking about incremental revenue from the development. We've kind of been talking about it as 100% of that revenue. It actually isn't. It's a conversation with this council and the developer, how much revenue you're willing to provide for those bonds. So you have the ability as a municipality and a governing council to tell the developer that you're only willing to provide 50% of the new incremental revenue to their project. By law, you can only go up to 75% of your grocery receipts tax or your property tax. In other words, the development, if it's successful and when it moves into full production, so to speak, you'll still, as a municipality, gain 25% of the incremental tax revenue that's coming in. You can gain more than that if you have a conversation and negotiation with the developer to only allow 50% or 25% of the new incremental revenue to go to the district. That negotiation really comes down to that economic analysis, how much revenue they anticipate generating, and the cost of the bonds and the annual payments for the bonds every year for the next however many years they need to sell bonds for to build the infrastructure. By statute in New Mexico, they can sell bonds for 25 years, so it could go on for as long as 25 years. Again, once the bonds are paid off, 100% of that new revenue will go to Town of Silver City. It'll be entirely within this community. Theoretically, the idea is that that infrastructure has now all been paid for, it's been conveyed to the Town of Silver City, and you now own it, and that revenue should accrue to you because, again, the purpose of the district is to finance those improvements. It doesn't have any other purpose other than that. So in that conversation, and this is one of the interesting things about tax increment development districts in New Mexico. In other states, this statute only allows for the collection of local option grocery receipts tax or property tax. In New Mexico, when they crafted the statute, they actually, they being the state, were willing to give their share or a portion of their grocery receipts tax that they take from you every month, they were willing to contribute that to a tax increment development district here in your community. So they, out of the 5% state share, the state is willing to give, or they take 3.775%, I know this is a little confusing, and I'll stop and wait for questions. The state's share is 3.775% of all the tax revenue that you earn in this community. In a tax increment development district, they are willing to give back for the payment of those bonds up to 75% of their share of the new incremental revenue. So what I advise clients, and I advise you now as well, this is a chance, if you do choose to use this tool, this is a chance to capture state grocery receipts tax revenue that normally would flow to Santa Fe and keep it right here in your community to build and pay for that infrastructure of that development. It's a strong opportunity to do that. Now, the conversation with the state is very intense, as you can imagine. They look very closely at that economic analysis, and they come up with their own opinion about what the development district should cost, what the bond should cost, and then they make a decision on what percentage they will put back to the community for this TID purpose. Nonetheless, this is money that would traditionally not stay here. Let's say that you didn't do the TID, but you had the new development. You have $2 million of new revenue coming in. The state would take their piece of that new revenue, and you would never, you would never see it again. You'd have to go to Santa Fe and ask them for capital outlay or something else. In the case of a TID, you would be able to keep a portion of that to pay those bonds that are for improvements within your community. And that's very unique to New Mexico. If the state says, "Yes, we're willing to give you a share of our state grocery receipts tax for this development," they make that approval through the State Board of Finance. The governor sits on that board. So you'll be required to travel to Santa Fe and have that conversation with them. If they say yes, then the legislature gets a chance to weigh in on that conversation as well. The legislature gets the chance to vote on a bill that would allow you to sell bonds paid for with state grocery receipts tax. And so that would happen at the next available legislature after you received your approval from the State Board of Finance for the state's share of grocery receipts tax. So, and once that happens, let's say the legislature approves that next year, then new grocery receipts tax that's created from the development district would start flowing into your community that following July. So that's, I know, and that's a lot to tell you. It's a lot of process, but that's how TID in New Mexico works from a revenue standpoint. It really basically says to the state, "We would love to do development on our community. We are asking you to participate and pay for that development on the front end and allowing us to pay for our bonds to improve our community within this district." So let me stop there before I move forward, and then I'll share some numbers with you from other property or projects that are going on in New Mexico. Again, trying to keep it at a high level, but it's not exactly the most simple concept to discuss, so.
Good.
Okay. Slide six gives you a sense of what's happened in New Mexico. So as I mentioned, there are several projects happening. Mesa del Sol, for those that don't know, is right south of the airport in Albuquerque. It's a 12,000 acre development. They were the first ones to be approved. The state approved 75% of their grocery receipts to be contributed to that project. The city of Albuquerque contributed 67% of their incremental revenue that's coming into the project. And then the county, and the county can play here as well, they have contributed 75% of the new revenue there as well. So those are a couple there in Albuquerque. Winrock Quorum, for those of you who know Albuquerque, that's Louisiana I-40. There's a lot of shopping centers there, and that project was successful in '09 to move forward. There hasn't been a lot of activity on that one because the market kind of fell out. We all understand what happened in the real estate market and sort of retail. That one is starting to move and start to move forward to, I know that they've been signing leases with some commercial tenants lately, so that you'll probably start hearing more about that development. The last two on the end there, Las Cruces and Rio Rancho, those are kind of unique tax increment development districts. Both of those districts are controlled and run by the cities. The city of Las Cruces wanted to redevelop their downtown. They had a huge federal courthouse project being built in their downtown, and they saw that as an opportunity to capture the grocery receipts from the construction of that project and renovate all the roads right there in the downtown area. So they put in a, they put the TID in place and were able to rebuild roughly $8 million of the roadways right there in downtown Las Cruces, paid for in part, as you can see the shares there, 75% from the state. They put in 75% themselves, and then the county chipped in as well, their 75%. Rio Rancho is a different story. They wanted to do a tax increment development district, but they wanted to do it all themselves. So they did not ask the state for their 75% share, and they didn't ask their county for their share. They had, they had basically set up a district to make some improvements in their community and use the incremental revenue from that development to pay for the improvements. So that one's all city managed and driven and also city paid for from the incremental revenue. And below that table, I've shown you the amount of revenue that has come in to those projects to date. This is up to December of 2011, so it's relatively current in terms of numbers. And then the last slide, and then I'll stop and share some other information with you very quickly. This is not a, it's not an overnight process. It shouldn't be an overnight process. There's a lot of information that you as a governing board in your community should discuss. So it tends to take anywhere from 18 to 24 months to put it together. The state, again, if you choose to go and ask the state to contribute to the development by providing their grocery receipts tax, they have some pretty stiff deadlines that are not movable. They stick to them. If you chose to do it today, you said, "Mark, go out and start helping us do this," the State Board of Finance requires an application to them by July 1 of every year, and then they have their hearing with you in December. The thought is, is then you'll go to the following legislature and pursue the bonds if you're successful getting the approval from the state for their piece of the grocery receipts tax. So a calendar of events, what happens first is you have a developer that wants to create this district. They have to have an election. They have to petition you to create that. If it's raw land and there's one owner, that's a pretty easy election. You know, they get to either vote yes or no, and obviously, if they're in front of you, they're in support of it. If it's your own community, like Mr. Brown had mentioned, that perhaps you would want to do it in your downtown area, you would have to discuss that, this concept with all the business owners and property owners in whatever district you drew a line around to be part of the, part of the district and gauge their support for something like this. They will have the opportunity to vote on it, and it needs, obviously, a majority vote to move forward on it. That's really the first process, then the development of the documents, the revenue and economic analyses that we can certainly help with, and bond finance plans, and then the conversations with the state and the other process that I had mentioned already, going to the legislature to pass this. Now, having said that, the assumption is that you've created a district within your community. That governing board, which would likely have your representation on it, would be responsible for coming to you on a periodic basis. It's up to you how routine, but at least on an annual basis, to report to you what the status of the bonds are, what the payments, what the revenues have been into the fund to pay those bond payments, the status of the improvements within the community, the status of the development of the community. Have all the retail establishments that they promised come in? Have the residential properties that were promised been built and sold? So during the life of that TID, which is the life of the bonds, you'll have a continuing conversation with that governing board who is managing its growth and its development. So in essence, that's the process. Again, it's very high level. There are a lot more details involved. Behind the tab, I thought what is useful, the city of Rio Rancho developed a policy on accepting tax increment development districts within their community. So they've essentially written a policy that says to any developer, whether it's themselves, "This is how we see the world from a tax increment development district standpoint, and anybody that wants to pursue that kind of a development in our community, here's everything that you need to know about putting together the information that the council will receive and begin to act upon." So I thought providing you their policy would give you a lot of background information on what sort of the will that they've created in terms of this policy issue and the use of this financing mechanism. So I apologize for going a little long. I'm going to stop there with my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. You have my phone number there. Call me anytime. I'm happy to discuss this in more detail with you, but, ma'am, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Mark. I'm sure they'll come up. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I just want to say, right off the bat, since we've borrowed some money recently and we're working on this IRB, this is a purely educational presentation because I- and we're working on this IRB, this is a purely educational presentation because I want to make sure that the council understands different financing mechanisms and you're as informed as possible, as well as the community, on what processes and mechanisms we have available to our community for future growth or whatever it might be. But we do not have any plans, I want to say that very clearly, any plans on doing anything like this anytime soon, but I really want to thank Mark and Brad for coming from Albuquerque. I guess they've been all over the state today, but I really want to thank them for coming by and doing this presentation.
Yeah, I just echo that. You know, we've talked for probably four years now about having Mark come up and educate us. The last time this was mentioned, the first time it was mentioned in a meeting, we all sat up here looking like deer in the headlights, and we felt it was very important to get you up here and make sure that the council understands what our options are. So definitely appreciate it.
I'm happy to be here. I love this community, so thank you.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of the Climate Change Adaptation Addendum Two to the 2019 Silver City Climate Action Plan. Linda and Nick?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Marshall, and members of the council. My name is Dr. Linda Thompson. I'm a member and facilitator of the mayor's Climate Protection Advisory Committee, and I'm here tonight, along with Nick Sicillo, to ask for your support for an addendum to the current climate plan that addresses the topic of adaptation. Relevant to climate change, the word "adaptation" here addresses the changes and actions necessary to respond to the forecast, in our case, of a hotter and drier future climate for southwest New Mexico. Creating an adaptation plan will allow us to not only identify strategies to address our local vulnerabilities, but also create an opportunity to build a stronger Silver City community through the formation and extension of numerous community partnerships. You should have in front of you a copy of that addendum. Do you? Okay. Then if you will look at the rationale there for just a moment, you can see that they include the ideas that water supplies will become increasingly scarce, increasing temperatures, drought, wildfire, and invasive species may increase and transform our local landscape. There'll be an increased frequency and altered timing of flooding, and that will increase risk locally as well. Possible impacts to tourism and recreation may be a result, and the city and agriculture will face increasing risks from a changing climate. This information comes from the National Climate Assessment 2009 Report, which was presented to NOAA, and an update to that report is in progress, and we should have that in the next few months. So Mayor Marshall has recommended that the Climate Committee address this issue, and he did that at the end of the summertime. The Climate Committee then formed an Adaptation Subcommittee in November of 2011 with members Nick Sicillo, Denise Smith, Allison Suick, and myself. After three meetings of the Subcommittee, a draft of the addendum was presented to the entire Climate Committee, who then approved the addendum that we submit to you tonight. At this time, I'd like to ask Nick Sicillo to speak in more detail about this adaptation addendum.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, council members, Mr. Brown, it's a pleasure to be here after, I guess, roughly nine months when we had the conversation here about the need to adapt for what is to come. There's obviously various news reports, various understandings within the community, both locally, regionally, and nationally, about what is happening here, and it is our hope to provide a little bit of clarity here. As Linda mentioned, the projections under the rationale were done four years ago by the Climus Group out of the University of Arizona. They are the NOAA lead, the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Association lead for the Southwest for the National Climate Assessment that is done as a requirement by Congress and published every four years by NOAA. Also, as Linda mentioned, the most recent research for the past four years, so it's hot off the press, has just been submitted to NOAA for the national assessment, the next one in 2013. For the first time, the University of Arizona will publicly release their submission to NOAA this June. So within several months, we will have 200 pages of fresh published research that basically summarize the work of four years by the university, saying, "Here's what we project for the Southwest." Dr. Jonathan Overpeck, who is co-director of the Institute of the Environment at the university, has said recently that the Southwest will take the greatest impact of the climate changes that the U.S. will see as time goes forward. Part of that is simply, we're already hot and dry in getting more so, but there are other reasons that will come out in the report as to why the Southwest will take the most significant impacts. Given the mounting data regarding climate change and projected disruption over the years, we feel it's time, and again, following up on the mayor's initiative last July, to take a close look at this, starting with the Southwest Impacts Report, working with the university, and developing our relationship with the Climus Program, which stands for Climate Assessment for the Southwest. It's a NOAA-funded program, again, as the regional lead for the Southwest, for the nation. And we've already met with Dan Ferguson, who is the program lead under the Institute of the Environment, and he's willing to work with us. Actually, he's basically said, "You know, Nick, we're not doing enough in New Mexico, and so this is a good opportunity. Glad you showed up." Part of what we're about is to try and get a handle on not just what's happening in projections for the Southwest, but what are our vulnerabilities here locally? That means doing a vulnerabilities assessment for this area with the assistance of the University of Arizona and the participation of Western New Mexico University. As you may know, Dr. Shepherd is in the process of beginning to look at forming a new center of the environment at Western, and we'll be developing partnerships not only with the University of Las Cruces, but also the University of Arizona. So this is a good timing for us. One of the things that I think will be very interesting is a response to the question, "Okay, what do you do with a vulnerabilities analysis?" Well, depending on what it says, you do what Tucson is going to do Saturday, and I'd like to give this to add to the record. Tucson is calling out clear civic leadership this Saturday to a power prepared Tucson summit to, as the flyer suggests, and it has gone out to the community, to address increasing risks in extreme weather. They have done a vulnerabilities assessment with the assistance of the University of Arizona. It apparently is significant enough that they are calling the community out. They will have a professionally-led moderation of this assembly at the Tucson Convention Center this Saturday, starting at 3 o'clock. I've been invited to be in a, quote, "official" New Mexico observer, obviously not a citizen of Tucson, but it's a great opportunity for us to see how this plays out and how the community reacts to what is going to be presented as the environmental projection over the years for the Tucson environment. And it probably will be fairly stark, given that Dr. Jonathan Overpeck, who basically is Mr. Climate for the Southwest, again, has basically said the Southwest is going to take the brunt of the impacts expected for the U.S. as a whole, and Tucson, given the red mapping of Arizona and this general area, Tucson at 2,000 feet elevation, that vulnerabilities assessment probably looks pretty disturbing. And, but we'll see. I'm due to get a copy of the vulnerabilities assessment, which I'd like to share with the council when it's provided. But that will give us an indication of a major city within our region and what their citizenry, based on the dynamics of that meeting, which will be recorded virtually real time. Each of the 200 attendees will have a switch, and there will be a series of projected questions about what the community's concerns are, how they would like to address, how they react to the vulnerabilities assessment, and that will be provided on large screen real time. And so it'll be interesting to see what next steps come out of this summit. And if there are some lessons learned for us, so much the better, but at least we'll have the benefit of that. So the, basically to summarize, we have three steps in terms of the implementation of this addendum. One is to continue the relationships with Climus and do our own vulnerabilities assessment with their assistance. Two is to attend the International Conference, the Second International Conference on Climate Change Adaptation, in Tucson at the end of May. The first one was in Australia, which is anticipating to be significantly impacted, as you may know, most of their, 90% of their population is in roughly a dozen coastal cities, and they are projected to take significant flooding as well as some very similar hotter and drier things across the country. So that country is very concerned. The fortunate serendipity that the Second International Conference is not in Africa, is not in Europe, it's three hours away, and it's only two months away. So in addition to getting the 200-page report from the university of their projections for the Southwest, we have an opportunity to participate and hear and interact with an international assembly of climate scientists who have been working this for years and years, addressing food security, water scarcity, drought, wildfire, windborne disease, et cetera, et cetera. And we're going to have that facilitated by Mary Stecker, who was involved as the former head of the mayor's Climate Committee, and will come back, and she'll tease out of it, out of us. The mayor and I are registered. We hope to bring as many as another 10 to the conference with additional funding that we are seeking outside. And Mayor, with Mary's help, we will come out with, "Here is what we collectively took away from that conference," and hopefully we'll come back and make a report to the council and make some observations and some recommendations. The third effort out of the implementation will be to pursue grant funding, to come up with a climate action plan with potential projects in partnership with Western New Mexico University, Allison Suick and the Hill Resource Information Project, the Department of Housing and Community Development of Santa Fe. That department houses their sustainability efforts. And also with the Climus Group, who said they will come in with this as well. The Kresge Foundation is a $2 billion asset-based foundation, and they have a separate pool for adaptation efforts, with an ongoing rolling call for proposals. And so we presently plan to submit the initial proposal at the end of June, and if that's well received, Kresge would then invite the partnership to submit a full-blown proposal. And so we'll see what happens. We'll swing the bat, see if we get on base. So that's our current plan. We offer opportunity for any questions at this point from the council in terms of what our objectives are.
I just want to comment a few things, Nick. I believe about a year ago, you and I attended a conference, and we were very fortunate to hear from a county commissioner out of Florida, who gave some very graphic examples that the climate has changed regardless of why. I mean, what they're seeing in Florida is, there's a neighborhood that was built probably in the '40s, '50s, just from looking at the architecture, and they show a guy standing in his driveway, then high tide comes in and his entire front and house is underwater every time high tide comes in, and so that's changed. We saw in the last year some of the most catastrophic fires in our history. And what, you know, Nick likes to get really technical, and this paper is technical. If you bring it down to what really matters to the policymaking body here and the town manager, and as we look forward, when you look at water issues, when you look at drought, wildfire, you have to look at, what are we going, are we going to have enough policemen? Are we going to have enough firefighters to respond to these issues when the fires are worse than we've ever seen them? We saw last year what happened after a few months of summer, and I talked to our firefighters, and I was down there at Penny Park when that burned, and those guys were tired. And these are issues that we can use and tools that we can use to pre-plan and make sure that we're able to address the public safety needs of the town. We have to look at our water policy. We have a bid out now for a water conservation plan. We've seen the winter storm issues. Last year, we had a storm like we haven't, I don't think we've ever experienced, that wiped out our natural gas system in parts of the state, froze and broke pipes all over this county. There's, we had to look at our infrastructure. How do we respond to what the environment's dealing with us today and what is appropriate? You know, it would be nice to be able to get all the streets cleared in a matter of four hours, but without using these tools to actually see where we're headed and what we're faced with and using the science, we don't know if buying 12 snow trucks is a great benefit or a waste of money. So that's really been the background and why I've been supporting Nick and the committee on their work in educating us on what are we looking at? And I don't care if it's 10 years, 20 years, 100 years, 1,000-year trend that, from any cause, man-made or a natural cycle, it doesn't matter. The fact is, we are seeing changes right now in how our fires are behaving, our water issues, our winter storms, that we have to start preparing for and be ready to develop those policies and that infrastructure. Questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Biden?
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick short break.
Mr. Mayor, second motion. There's a motion, a second for a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carriers, we're in recess. We'll call this meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda is under unfinished business, approval disapproval of ordinance number 1195, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico industrial revenue bond, NRG Solar Silver City LLC project, Series 2012, in the maximum principal amount of $4 million to provide funds to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a solar power facility for the purpose of generating electricity, authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture, a lease agreement, a bond purchase agreement, bond, and other documents in connection with the issuance of the bond and the project, making certain determinations and findings related to the bond and the project, ratifying certain actions taken previously and repealing all actions inconsistent with this ordinance.
Mayor, first of all, I would like to, as to one of the questions that came up at the last meeting about the payment and bill of tax with the school district, they did pass a resolution waiving any payment and bill of taxes, so there is no payment that is going to be required to the schools. So I just wanted to start off with that, and then let Mr. Duffy go ahead and answer your questions.
Eddie Duffy from Southern Tarrant Brown, counsel to the town in connection with the industrial revenue bonds. So what you have before you is the bond ordinance approving of the issuance of $4 million
Eddie Duffy from Southern Tarrant Brown, um, counsel to the town in connection with the industrial revenue bonds. So what you have before you is the bond ordinance approving of the issuance of $4 million in industrial revenue bonds for the NRG Silver City project. In addition to proving the ordinance, the bond, uh, I'm sorry, the ordinance also approves the lease, the indenture, and the bond purchase agreement. The bonds are going to be used to finance the construction of a solar power generation project, which will sell power to the town pursuant to the power purchase agreement, which was approved earlier this month. And just to restate a, a few of the points that, um, we mentioned during the last meeting to just clarify what industrial revenue bonds are and they aren't, and what they do and what they don't do. Um, from the town's perspective, most importantly, the bonds are obligations which are paid exclusively with monies by the developer. Um, under the municipal IRB Act, the bonds can't constitute an indebtedness of the town under state constitutional provisions, and can never give rise to pecuniary liability of the town or a charge against its general credit or its taxing powers. So, you know, no matter what happens, the town's credit nor its monies nor its assets can be applied to pay the bond. So if, for whatever reason, the developer does not repay the bonds, the bond purchaser can go after the developer, but it won't be able to touch any company, uh, any, I'm sorry, any town assets. Even if the developer were to go to bankrupt, under the IRB documents, the remedy would be, the bond purchaser could accelerate payments due from the developer and, um, execute on the collateral, but would not be able to touch any of the town's assets, nor could the town's credit be used to satisfy those obligations. So, you know, most importantly then, the, from the town's perspective, these bonds do not require any monies or debt payments to be made by the town under any circumstances to satisfy the bonds. Question, Mayor, is then how are the bonds financed? It's one of two ways usually. Um, one way which we're not using here is through an underwritten bond offering, and under that case, the bonds would be sold to an underwriter, who would then get the bonds rated and try to sell them in the public, and with those monies, give them to the developer for the project. That's a public process, and that's not the case here. The structure here is called a self-purchase, where the, um, developer is essentially selling the bonds to one of its own affiliates, and it's self-financing the bonds. And this self-finance structure is by far the most common, uh, structure for IRBs that we see here in the state of New Mexico. Certainly over the past five years, it's, um, much more common than underwritten offerings. I think all of the solar facilities, all the wind facilities, every renewable energy facility that's been financed through bonds, has been financed through this self-purchase structure and not through an underwritten offering. So the question might be, um, if you're a developer and you're not getting any money or credit from the town, and you're not accessing public monies to finance a project, why do these bonds? What, what is the benefit to you? And the answer there is that these bonds provide tax benefits. Um, the developer gets property tax benefits on the project assets and gross receipts and compensating tax benefits on, um, purchases that it makes to equip the project. And this has become a very important, um, component, particularly with a lot of renewable energy projects where the economics are pretty tight, and these tax incentives are very important in order to make these projects work. Um, the, the benefits to the town, you might ask, you know, what, what do towns look for? And it sort of varies from town to town. In this case, my sense is that it is the ability to construct this facility, which is going to sell you power at a very favorable rate. And so by passing the IRBs, you're, uh, enabling the economics that will make the construction of that facility possible. The tax abatement is provided, uh, under the structure of the IRBs, and the way that they're structured is the developer at closing will transfer the bond assets over to the town. The town will hold the assets, lease them back to the developer. The developer will pay rent on those, but the rent will go directly to the bond purchaser to make payments of principal and interest. So the town essentially, after the bond closing, steps out, and the developer makes payments directly to the bond purchaser. And just a, a few updates since last time. As, as Alex mentioned, this is a, uh, power generation facility, and the IRB statute specifically requires the school district to approve of a power generation facility IRB and of any payment in lieu of taxes, which would be required in connection with an IRB. Uh, at their last meeting, as Alex reported, the school district did approve of the IRB and indicated that they're not going to be requiring an independent payment in lieu of taxes. Also during the last meeting, there was a question regarding the, the bond purchaser and its qualification to do business in New Mexico. There was a comment that, uh, there'd been some search done on the, um, PRC's website, and they couldn't identify or find the bond, that the bond purchaser had registered in New Mexico. And even though it's not customarily the practice for bond purchasers to, to register in this type of deal, we did pass that request along to the company, and the company has , uh, registered the bond purchaser, the NRG Silver City bond purchaser, um, with the PRC. So, and we have representatives from the company and their council here as well, who, I'm not sure if they wanted to say anything, but I will stand for questions as I believe the company and their, um, council are.
Any questions for Mr. Duffy?
Yes, sir. I have one. Hold on. Uh, when did the Silver City Bond Purchaser LLC, when did they register with the state? And when did that happen?
I believe it was this week or last week. I'm not sure.
3/27.
We, we have formed, I'm sorry, Brian Cassett with, uh, NRG Solar, um, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh, we formed the bond purchasing entity two weeks ago and registered it in New Mexico this week. And it's, uh, NRG Silver Bond Per, Silver City Bond Purchase LLC.
Any other questions?
No. Question.
Any questions from the audience? You can come to the podium if you have questions. Sing then? Okay. Please come to the podium.
I'd like to ask a question. Were other, um, businesses, other than NRG, um, actually checked out for, um, making a plan like this? Is this a one and only thing, or have other, um, solar producers been checked out for comparison?
Actually, when we went through the RFP process, uh, where we evaluated, I believe, four different companies, uh, four different companies that submitted, uh, replied, responded to our RFPs, and NRG was selected as the most qualified.
All right. Who select, or who selected NRG?
The town of Silver City.
Okay. Does NRG have a, um, track record, a history of experience on which to, um, base or trust the, um, outcomes?
Uh, they've, that was, uh, part of the selection process, their history, their track record, um, the company. Actually, it wasn't the references that we, we made with other, primarily, I guess, most of the work had been done in California previous to New Mexico. So we did do, uh, reference checks with other, um, organizations that they, they gave us, and everything, there was nothing unusual, or they were, they were good references.
Okay. And, um, are the plans complete for what they will do here in Silver City?
Mark, can you, I'm, Brian, can you answer that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, first of all, NRG is the largest holder of solar energy facilities in the United States. In 2011, we deployed over $3.2 billion worth of financing, uh, for solar energy facilities. Uh, our portfolio of arrays includes, uh, distributed generation arrays, uh, like we are building here in Silver City. That essentially refers to a situation where we're building, uh, a generational facility to serve a load that is on the same site as that generational facility. Uh, we also own many utility-scale facilities, uh, where we're selling wholesale power into the energy markets. And that addressed the first question. The second question is, are the, are the plans complete? Um, typically, we don't go to final engineering, uh, until we've, we've wrapped up the contract, which we're doing now, and our next step would be to, uh, proceed with the final engineering. But certainly, uh, in order to, uh, reserve our place in the PNM rec purchase program, uh, and to, uh, understand what the savings would be to the town, we have done an initial design. Uh, we, we understand, um, how large the system is gonna be, uh, how much, uh, energy it's gonna produce. Um, and, uh, now we'll get down to the, uh, details as far as the engineering is concerned.
I, I think it's important to understand that we're just buying power from them, that we have a set rate, that we're going to be buying the electricity from them. How they come up with that electricity is basically their business.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct. We're, we are in the business of selling kilowatt-hours, not, uh, not solar panels.
Are you, are you done?
I'd like to ask one more question.
Go ahead.
We all would love solar energy, but would this have been possible? Uh, something this large, wouldn't it have been appropriate to put it on a ballot and check to see if the community was really behind this? We love it, but we don't know if it's affordable.
It is affordable. It doesn't, it doesn't tie up any of your tax money. It doesn't cost the town anything. It's saving. The only thing that we're doing is, right now, PNM, we pay 11, 12 cents per kilowatt hour for electricity. Well, and that, they're gonna go in for another rate increase at the end of this year. So that number is gonna do nothing but grow. What we're doing is setting for a predetermined number of years that we're going to buy electricity for six point something kilo, cents per kilowatt hour, steady for that entire time. So every time PNM raises their rates, all it does is increase our savings.
I know.
And we still, if, for some reason, they're unable to produce the power, we still have PNM to fall back on, and we have guarantees for a year to, to help us get through that transitional period. So there are guarantees on both sides of, of the agreement already for both entities, both the town and, and NRG, uh, in case of default, what it might be, whatever, uh, just in case. Well, we are always going to be able to pay for the, because we are gonna have to, um, by ordinance, we have to, um, include the cost of paying for the electricity to run the wastewater treatment plant in the rate structure. So we will always have to be able to pay for the, the electricity. But for, if there's ever a reason that NRG cannot supply the power, disaster, whatever it might be, then there are remedies to protect us, well, to either find another solar generating facility, uh, entity, or for them to rebuild it, or for us to convert just strictly to PNM. Uh, so that we are protected in many different ways as they are. There's many, many, many. I mean, we've been negotiating this thing for, it seems like a lifetime. But there are many, many protections on both sides.
Okay. I think I'm concerned that we have just passed, what, a 7.8 million, and we're coming back with another 4 million. And I really, I love solar energy. I do passive solar at home. But it seems like we're putting up an awful lot of, um, of bonding, and I just hope that we know what we're doing.
The money that we're saving on this project will almost pay off the, the previous bond that you referred to. So, because we're not doing this bonding, we have, this is, if you've been at the last meeting, we, we had a lengthy discussion about this, but this is a process to make sure that they don't have to pay tax when they build their panels and put up the solar field, so that we don't end up paying it on the, the other end in our rates. So all this is doing is a financing mechanism to get the tax dropped off that we would end up paying in the long run through our rates. If the state would pass legislation that says if, if a municipality wants to do this, then they don't have to pay the tax, then we wouldn't have to do this. We would just develop the project and collect the savings off of it, and it would be a lot shorter, quicker process than having to go through this industrial revenue bond process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on.
My name is Carolyn Lewis. My question is, how does this affect me as a citizen of Silver City homeowner?
How this affects you directly as a citizen of Silver City and a, and a rate payer on water and sewer and using our infrastructure, is we're saving money that we're able to divert to other purposes.
Okay. But I won't see, will I see a change in my electric bill?
You will not necessarily see one. We can look at that again in, at the end of the, when we do the budget. But right now, what you're gonna see, if we put all that money into paying off the previous bond that we did a few months ago, what you're gonna see is the brand-new baseball field, soccer fields out at Scott Park. You're gonna, you can already go by and drive and see the tennis courts that were built, the roof on the Public Works Building, the, um, clubhouse at the golf course. That's where that bond money went, and the savings can, can go back to, to pay for that.
So as a citizen, it will not affect my energy rates at my home, one way or the other?
Absolutely not.
Just in what the city expenses are and how they're dealt with?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
I just, I guess what I wanted to clarify is that this will not, basically, there won't be any additional, to my knowledge, increase in terms of the electric rates that potentially would have to be passed through on our water sewer. That's what we're talking about here.
Every year, I have to go back and review the rates.
Right.
The rates for everything. And the base rate for sewer and wastewater.
Right.
Is any debt service that is applied to either one of those facilities. Then the variable portion of it, per thousand gallons, is the operational part of the, operating the facilities. That's where, uh, the customer will see a more stable, as far as the wastewater rate, they will see a more stable rate when it comes to the electric portion of the operations. Because we are not gonna have to deal with any future increases from PNM. Well, 20% of the future increases we will, but this is supposed to cover 80% of the total operation, operations of the wastewater treatment plant. So that is where it makes it, when we're paying 200 and some thousand dollars in electricity to operate the wastewater treatment plant, we're talking about a substantial amount of our operation, operating costs at the wastewater treatment plant. So it makes that big chunk of the operational costs much more stable over the next 20 years. Well, it keeps it at this rate, 6.9 cents over the next 20 years, where we won't have to deal with PNMs other than the 20% that, that this doesn't cover. Uh, the- cover, uh, their rate increases over the next twenty years. So that savings, that stabilization of the, the electric, electrical costs actually is passed on to the customer, because you, they don't have to pay for that increased operational costs.
Well, would you like saying, if it costs us currently two hundred thousand, you said correct, for the electric portion, and by some fluke, all of a sudden it's caught, you know, without this, it would cost four hundred thousand, that would be significant pass through.
Then we would have passed that on to the customer.
Yeah, we would have passed it on. But what we're saying now is it would be twenty percent of that additional twenty thousand, that, I mean, two hundred thousand, that would be, that would be passed through, which is significantly different than the whole amount. See what I'm saying? Sort of like what we had talked about earlier, it's a significant difference, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to ask a couple of questions, um, hopefully, to simplify it in my mind as I go forward to making a decision, but hopefully clarify it to a, to a number of people. Are, we collect grocery receipts tax, we collect property taxes from our citizens. Are any of those dollars going to be used to pay these bonds?
No.
How are these bonds going to be paid?
These bonds are going to be paid through the electrical, electric bill that we pay them. They, they will use what, the power generation, they will use the operating costs that we would have paid to P and M, they will use what we're going to pay them to pay these bonds.
So if a private company, just like P and M, is going to charge us a rate and they're going to pay their own debt?
Their own debt, yes.
With the money that they receive from us, even though it's, they're receiving less than what P and M currently receives?
Yes.
And the only reason why our name's even on this is simply because they want some tax incentives?
They want some tax, tax incentives which they are passing on to us, because...
And by state law, it has, so it has to have our name on it, even though this is not debt being paid by any of our tax dollars?
No. No, it's not.
Thank you, Senator.
My name is Peter Bowles. I think you'll find out that since Public New Mexico has to have twenty percent of their power from renewable resources by the year 2020, and that renewable power will cost about four times as much as the coal or natural gas power that they are currently using, Public New Mexico is using, and I believe these gentlemen could probably confirm that, this is part of that mandate. And they are going to be, they're going to pay these people to put this solar system in place, because it will be cheaper for Public New Mexico, that tiny proportion, this will help them meet that twenty percent mandate, which is in the law. This energy is going to, it will not, it will in fact cause Mrs. Lewis's electricity bill to go up, along with everybody else in the state. There's no free lunch out there. Now, we are going to save money here in Silver City, which I think is a good idea, but it's just simply because we got to the trough first.
Thanks, Peter. Any other comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 1195, an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico Industrial Revenue Bond, N R G Solar Source City LLC Project Series 2012, in the maximum principal amount of four million dollars to provide funds to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipping of solar power facility for the purpose of generating electricity, authorizing the execution and delivery of an indenture, a lease agreement, a bond purchase agreement, bond and other documents in connection with the issuance of the bond and the project, making certain determinations and findings related to the bond and the project, ratifying certain actions taken previously, and repealing all actions inconsistent with this ordinance.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1195. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 1195, as read twice in the record. Roll call, please.
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Madison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of bid 11 slash 12 dash 19 trailer-mounted sewer rotor. Mr. Brown?
The town received one bid, um, for bid 11 slash 12 dash 19 for a trailer-mounted ro, uh, rotor. It's that big thing that drives down the street behind the truck that they ran out the sewer mains. Uh, we budgeted sixty thousand dollars for this. We had one responsive bidder, Pete's Equipment Repair Inc., um, for a total amount, which includes grocery receipts taxes, for forty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents. It's the staff's recommendation that we award the bid to Pete's Equipment Repair Inc.
Counselor.
Just to make sure, will it be a brand new one?
Brand new, yes.
Oh, okay, just because it came from a Pete's repair.
They, we buy fire trucks and...
Wanted to make sure.
Everything's brand new.
Okay.
We have a very long history of working with Pete's Equipment and Repair. Is there any motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move that we approve bid 11 slash 12 dash 19 trailer-mounted sewer rotor, per staff's recommendation to Pete's Equipment Repair Incorporated, for a total plus G R T of forty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Is there a second? There is. There's a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation on bid 11 12 19. Any discussion? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second, no further discussion, to approve bid 11 slash 12 dash 19 trailer-mounted sewer rotor two, for staff recommendation to Pete's Equipment and Repair Incorporated, for a total of forty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-four dollars and fifty cents, that includes grocery receipts tax. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of bid 11 12 20 homeowner rehabilitation. Mr. Brown?
The town received two bids for, uh, bid 11 slash 12 dash 20 home rehabil, rehabilitation, uh, one from Chavez Plastering and Cement Construction, the second from Hatton Sons Building Development. Hatton Sons was deemed non-responsive, because they did not, uh, supply a subcontractor list, and they did not have the, uh, licenses to do the plumbing and electrical, uh, work for the, um, the rehabilitation. Um, originally, we sent you a, a recommendation to reject the bid, all bids, but, um, because Mike was on, on vacation, and we didn't know exactly how much was available for the budget for it, uh, we did find out that, uh, there is eighty thousand dollars available for each home for rehabilitation, and, um, so it is, uh, one hundred percent grant funds. So it is staff's recommendation to award bid 11 slash 12 dash 20 to Chavez Plastering Ring and Cement Construction, for a total amount, which includes material, labor, grocery receipts taxes, total amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Entertained a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I move that we approve bid 11 slash 12 dash 20 homeowner rehabilitation, uh, per staff's recommendation to Chavez Plastering and Cement Construction, for a total project cost, uh, which includes G R T for fifty-five thousand one hundred nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as read.
Is there a motion and a second to approve? Any discussion? Counselor.
How come my form says fifty-one thousand?
Look, it's...
Oh, yeah. Get that. Okay, I'm...
This is the...
You must have had the best notes.
Oh.
She hasn't, she doesn't have the correct.
That's right, she has under advisement.
Hold on. I feel much better now. Okay. I'm ready now.
Okay. We motion and a second, we're discussion. Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second, no further discussion, to approve bid 11 slash 12 dash 20 homeowner rehab two Chavez Plastering and Cement Construction, for a total of fifty-five thousand one hundred nine dollars and ninety-two cents, and to include grocery receipts tax. All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of bid 11 slash 12 dash 21 homeowner rehabilitation. Mr. Brown?
The town, uh, received one bid for, uh, 11 slash 12 dash 21, uh, home rehabilitation from Oak Ridge Home Industries, for a total amount of sixty-one thousand three hundred eleven dollars and thirteen cents. Again, as I stated earlier, uh, there's a, in the grant, it allows for up to eighty thousand dollars per home. Uh, the funds are available in the grant, and, uh, it is one hundred percent grant, uh, funded. So it's staff's recommendation to award the, the bid to Oak Ridge Home Industries Inc. for sixty-one thousand three hundred eleven dollars and thirteen cents.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor, Mr.?
I move to approve bid 11 slash 12 dash 21 homeowner rehabilitation, per staff's recommendation to Oak Ridge Home Industries Incorporated, for a total plus G R T of sixty-one thousand three hundred eleven dollars and thirteen cents.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as read.
You said sixty-one thousand plus G R T. That's including G R T.
Total plus G R T, right?
No, total including G R T is sixty-one three eleven.
Oh, I just was reading from here where it says total plus G R T, I'm sorry. Including G R T. I men, I Russians say total, including G R T.
I accept that.
My apologies.
There's a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation on bid 11 12 dash 21 homeowner rehabilitation. Any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion, to approve bid 11 slash 12 dash 21 homeowner rehabilitation to Oak Ridge Home Industries Incorporated, for a total of sixty-one thousand three hundred and eleven dollars and thirteen cents, that includes grocery receipts tax. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of disposal of surplus and/or obsolete town property. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and counsel, uh, the staff is asking for permission to, um, dispose of the, these, uh, vehicles, uh, which have, are obsolete, have been wrecked and are basically totaled, uh, by the insurance companies. Uh, what we're planning on doing is, um, we've shopped around to scrap metal vendors already, and, um, actually, we were given the best price, uh, from the company that actually buys the scrap metal from the Solid Waste Authority. So we will be selling these, uh, scrap metal to, uh, the company that works with the Solid Waste Authority, and those funds would be put that back into the, the city's budget.
It's a long time coming.
We, we, look at the next list.
This is the vehicles and all the computer equipment?
Well, this one is just the vehicles. Well, no?
No.
Yes, no, it's...
It says revised equipment list, new business, item D, on the computer equipment.
Let me make sure. Yeah, it, it does include the, all the computer equipment. That, five, six pages of printers, monitors, old computers that, um, our I T person has gone through and scavenged every usable component of.
And just because I watched the news this week, can we make sure that all the police, fire, other equipment is de-identified prior to leaving our property?
Yeah, they're completely...
Erased?
Erased?
Oh, yes, we will. Yes, we will.
That's been hanging out by it and doing whatever it wants to do.
That's not what I'm referring to, but that's fine, too.
Yeah, all those tags and, yeah, but I also mean, that's the other thing, to make sure that any hard drives are completely...
Well, all of that has been by, uh, state law, all the hard drives from the computers and everything have been removed.
Okay.
And disposed of properly.
Question?
They've been completely erased and, and they were disposed of through the approved process that the state mandates. So the computers that we're disposing of don't have hard drives.
Okay, since I, unfortunately, was not here to see the news, because I was out of state for my employment at a conference, this is, you're talking about I D tags and things like that, what's the...
Discussing removing the decals from the sides of the police car doors and the signs that say Silver City Police and...
Those I D tags. Those I D tags.
We don't want them showing up in home videos.
Yeah, and, and all of them have asset tags that will be removed, and they will be re, removed from the asset list.
Thank you.
Inventory.
Any other discussion? Entertained a motion?
Wait, just one question. How come there's no barcode on a couple of the cars? And the sweeper, I don't know any older than any of the others.
Two thousand two.
Two thousand and one.
Because we actually, um, in two thousand, let's say approximately six years ago, we actually went to an asset, uh, a company that came through and helped us update all of our asset inventory, and they put tags on everything. They missed a few items, so these don't have, we couldn't find, they were out in our asset inventory, but we couldn't find tag, tags on them. And we've got titles for all of them and everything, so...
I respect. Any other comments? Entertained a motion? Mr. Mayor? Counselor?
I make a motion to approve of disposal of surplus and/or obsolete town property as listed.
As listed.
As listed.
Just say as listed.
As listed, I'm sorry. As, as listed.
Is there a second?
I second that motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve the disposal of surplus and/or obsolete town property as listed. Is there any discussion in the motion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is appointment of one member to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I have a recommendation from the chair, and I concur that Mr. John Tafoya would be a welcome asset to the P and Z Commission. Is there any objections? Seeing, hearing no objections, Mr. Tafoya is appointed. And the next item on the agenda is appointment of one member to the Recycling Advisory Committee. And I have recommendation from the chair of the Recycling Advisory Board Committee, and I agree that Amy Hart has applied and would be a good asset to the commission. has applied and would be a good asset to the committee. Is there any objection? Hearing the end, Amy Hart is duly appointed. And the game's begun. My part of the show's over.
We're supposed to do something?
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I second it.
There's a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.